Nater of Theatre Network South Wales. We might start with you, Kerry. Could you take either an oath or an affirmation?
Yeah, affirmation. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, Kerry. And then if each of you could take either an oath or an affirmation, and we may just go in the order of Nicole, Katrina, Penelope and then Christopher. Nicole?
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thanks, Katrina.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thanks, Penelope.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
And Christopher?
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. If I could ask you each, if you wish to make a brief opening statement, brief would be great because we have time for questionings. And I can indicate that we've received that communication from the Theatre Network Australia as well. Who would like to kick us off? Well, again, I might start with you, Kerry.
Sure. Thanks so much for having me. And of course, we'd like to acknowledge the government's strong leadership during this crisis to get us through. It goes without saying that the safety is paramount and our sector is here to support the pathway with best practice. Each year, the Sydney Fringe Festival supports the work of over 2,200 local independent artists. We activate 70 venues across 25 postcode areas of Sydney. We generate an economic impact to the city of $12 million and pay three quarters of a million dollars in performance fees to local artists. This year, the city and its arts workers have lost that investment. The small to medium part of the sector that I represent provides the bulk of the cultural infrastructure New South Wales enjoys, the majority of events on any given night, career pathways, audience development, new work investment and localised economic stimulus. We're vital to the economic success of the live arts industry, where we are key to delivering the aims and aspirations of the government's very welcome 24-hour economy plan and all existing cultural policy. Without the small to mediums, we simply do not have an industry. Unfortunately, we are also the most inadequately funded part of the sector. We don't have a safety net of philanthropy or additional income streams or significant corporate partnerships to get us through this crisis. 2020 has been financially and creatively devastating for this city without Sydney Fringe Festival, and 2021 looks equally as grim. We currently have no clear line of sight for adequate support to reactivate for next year. I am imploring Treasury to back the 24-hour economy plan hard and fast, to provide additional funds to create New South Wales to distribute specifically to the small to mediums, including for-profit venues and businesses. Because we cannot wait until next year, we will simply not be here. This is the third inquiry I've given evidence at in the past 24 months. Each time, I demonstrate the importance of our sector to the health and wellbeing of this state, but instead of seeing strategic support, we are called upon for further consultation. This is the moment where we need help. It's the moment for government to step up and seriously back our industry before me or my colleagues are simply no longer here to appear at the next inquiry.
Thanks, Kerry. Christopher, we might go to you next.
Thank you. And would echo my colleagues' Kerry's comments. Just by way of introduction, Sydney Festival, annual celebration of arts and culture for 44 years, presenting the best of performing arts from around the world, as well as, of course, showcasing what we're for local. To date, being a January festival, the organisation has had only minimal impacts of the current health crisis, but as we head into January 2021, we are certainly facing a challenging time in getting the festival on. All stakeholders to date, government being a key stakeholder in the festival, as well as the City of Sydney, City of Parramatta and other commercial stakeholders, have a strong will to see the festival happen in January. And we are working with government, Ministry of Health, to ensure that if we do get on, we can get on, of course, in a COVID-state environment. One of the key drivers for us to ensure that we are on is to reinforce my colleagues' Kerry's comments there, the industry, particularly the industry made up of a lot of freelance work at spades, artists, technicians and other support staff, have really struggled. And the notion that the festival can provide a resource for that, that kind of the sector is vital and hence a reason for us to be even if we get the festival out to reduce number of attendances because of the COVID restrictions. So we're working as hard as we can to get the festival happening and getting great support from government, including guidance on what is possible in a COVID-state environment.
Thanks very much, Christopher. Penelope?
Yep. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Oranation and pay my respects to elders, past, present and emerging. As well as being an absolute health disaster, these last six months have been the most significant disruption to the arts industry that we've known. Despite being the state with the largest population and the biggest budget, New South Wales commits one of the lowest per capita arts investment levels in Australia. The COVID-19 crisis is inspiring a great deal of rethinking and reimagining of the creative landscape, and it is so great to speak here to contribute to this important inquiry. The National Association for the Visual Arts represents about 4,500 individual and organisation members and a further 25,000 subscribers all over Australia. Our office is located in Sydney and more than 45% of our members and subscribers are based across the state of New South Wales. This year has been the most turbo workload that I've ever been a part of. Our team has worked around the clock supporting artists, galleries and event organisers who were all strapped to the loss of all expected self-generated income for this year, as arts and cultural events across the state had to announce their closure and cancellations very early on. New South Wales-based artists continue to be the largest cohort of applicants to know the Art Benevolence Fund. The postponement and cancellation of solo shows, group exhibitions, residencies, festivals, public programming, workshops and live performances statewide, nationally and internationally has had a disastrous impact, both financially and mentally. While Jobkeeper has really supported some of our arts organisations, a huge proportion of public galleries in New South Wales are owned by local government and universities, and none of those have been able to access any kind of income support. This week, the public gallery sector has been rocked further by the funding announcement from Create New South Wales, which has instantly put many struggling regional and Western Sydney-based galleries in an even more precarious position. While the New South Wales sector is grateful that we were able to reopen in June, that announcement came barely without notice for two days, support was no support or clear instructions. We're still a far cry away from the level of visitation and activity that we're used to, and as long as we need to keep distancing, the art sector is just not going to be able to draw the kind of income that even comes close to the operating cost just to open the door.
Thanks, Penelope. And then Nicole and Katrina, who's going to speak?
I'll speak, thank you so much. I'm speaking to you today from the lands of the Bunurang people of the Kulin nation in Melbourne, and Katrina is on Gadigal land in Sydney. Theatre Network Australia is a peak body or a service organisation for performing arts. We focus on the small to medium sector and independence, but we do also have major companies and institutions as members as they want to see a stronger entire sector. I have three points. I want to make sure you understand the devastating impact that COVID has had on our sector. I want to talk about the problems with arts funding processes in New South Wales and the role for government going forward. So first of all, the impact, as you all know, we've heard in the media that arts and culture was the second hardest hit, with 25% job losses, and that will increase. And there's massive impact at all levels. So with the major companies, they rely very heavily on box office. A few of them, most of them have less than 10% of the income is from government grants. So while they were doing well in normal times, right now they are devastated. And it looks like 20% of major performing arts companies might be solvent, just from my rough numbers. We urge you to extend the government, to extend the 50% capacity rule that was applied to stadiums yesterday, that would help a lot if all seated venues had that 50% capacity rule. The companies, Jobkeeper has been fantastic for them, but again, like others were saying, when that finishes next year, we're going to see some companies closing. But also the important role of independents. So independents in the performing arts are those who don't work inside a company structure. And I had a little count of the Sydney Festival programme, and just by my rough count of Australian work, close to a half of that work was by independents. So they provide a big part of what is presented in the Australian performing arts, and they have suffered significant losses. So on average, independents had eight creative projects planned for 2020 and only two and a half are going ahead, including in digital form. So that 68% of creative projects have been lost. The problems with arts funding in New South Wales, we surveyed our members and you've got the member insight document there with you, so three different surveys. In essence, the level of satisfaction by artists and companies in the New South Wales arts funding programmes is extremely low. 47% of respondents stated that their overall experience was negative and only 17% had positive experiences. 80% of respondents believe that the current decision-making processes are not transparent. The key issues are political interference and ministerial interference. 95% are dissatisfied or very dissatisfied with the Arts Minister's advocacy for the sector, and none were satisfied at all. There is genuine sympathy for the Create New South Wales staff that came through in our surveys, but there is a feeling that the department is broken with blown-out timelines, lack of transparency, poor communication and lack of feedback being the common complaints. Some people heard about their application outcomes after the project was due to start. And lastly, government's role. The sector is desperate for leadership in how to reopen and how to rebuild the sustainable industry, as we've heard from my colleagues. Consistent guidelines would help on how to develop a COVID-safe plan. They want a roadmap, or at least the next step towards what a COVID normal might be. You know, 50% capacity by the end of October is what people are calling for, but also definitions of what COVID normal is. The sector can help with that, and we're calling on the government to set up art-form industry roundtables as one example of how the industry can help government get this underway. In closing, as we look towards a post-COVID world, arts and culture can play a huge role in helping young people rebuild their mental health, in helping people mourn the old ways of the world, recreating community connections and in helping us all come to terms with what a new world will look like. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Katrina, I'm assuming Nicole's spoken on behalf of the two, or did you have something specific to add at the outset?
No, Nicole covered.
And just quickly, Nicole, did you want to formally table that report that you emailed to the committee?
Yes, please.
All right, we'll treat that as tabled. I'm going to pass to John Graham for the initial questions.
Thank you, Chair. And thanks for your submissions and evidence. I might start on that question about the move to 50%. I think it's important to say upfront, we've got to be guided by the health advice. That's the, I think, the view of everyone here. But this is about how could we get to a position that might work for the sector within that health advice? Stadia have moved to 50%. I guess one of the advantages they've got is a lot of that would be outdoor, but a combination of moving a 50% outdoor performance and maybe masks, is that the sort of path through that might make a difference? That seems like a big step from where we are, and how urgent is that action? If something doesn't happen, we've already had evidence today that-
You've got about three questions there.
Yeah. I'll stop there.
Yeah. I'm not stopping the question from being asked.
So it's about the 50%, so we might start with you, Kerry, and then we'll work our way through the panel.
It's incredibly urgent. It's imperative that venues are encouraged to safely reopen. At the moment, as you would have heard from the previous panel with the live music, it's the same across theatre. Many of our theatres across the state are independently owned, small spaces. It is simply not viable to open under the current restrictions. So the sooner that we can increase those, the better. For those who don't know, I own the old 505 Theatre in Newtown. We've been open since July. We were the first space to reopen under stringent restrictions. We have presented theatre there for the last two weeks. We did music prior to that with the Sydney Fringe Festival. We've had 100% hit rate on our audience surveys of their feeling safe, so it is possible to do it and people are coming out. However, under the current restrictions, we need to sell 100% of our reduced capacity every night, and everyone needs to buy a minimum of two drinks for us to break even while we have Jobkeeper and rent reprieve.
Okay, so even with Jobkeeper and rent reprieve, it's almost-
We are not making any money. But what I will say is that the benefit of encouraging venues to open means that artists are being paid something. My front-of-house staff are there, we're buying a little bit of drink from our suppliers, it keeps it ticking over, and more importantly, we're maintaining our audience engagement, which is a massive problem and a fear I have as people get more comfortable at home watching Netflix.
Well, I'm going to go to the panel, and I'll just pick an order. Nicole and Katrina, then Penny and Christopher. Nicole?
Katrina, did you want to say something?
I would just reiterate what Kerry said, it's absolutely urgent, it's a real priority. We really need, you know, that venues open. People do want to go out, people are interested in going out, they seem like performance. If that's not viable, I think all ranges are very at the current guidelines. I'd also just note that there are many international examples of theatres who have been open for months, and they're doing it safely. I know Taiwan has been leading the way and South Korea have had their theatres open for many months now, where their audiences are entering safely, and they have templates and systems in place that we could easily borrow and use and work with our health department to get those guidelines that we need to open venues.
Yes. We've heard from our members in New South Wales who have opened up, and as long as they are communicating really well to the audiences what they're doing in terms of providing COVID-safe places, then the audience is feeling comfortable, they're feeling very comfortable. The inconsistency at the moment is after the show, when they might go to a restaurant and there are different rules in place in terms of the restaurant or the bar, that's when the audiences start to feel a little uncertain about, well, what is the right rule and am I safe here? So consistency across all venues and spaces would help that a lot.
Penelope?
Just reiterating the words of my colleagues, yes, it's urgent. I'd say particularly in regional areas where the galleries serve, you know, a very social space, not just for the viewing of art, but a place for people to get together, and that is really lacking, and people really need it. And as I said, it's very difficult under the current guidelines to even make enough money to break even, to open the door. So it is urgent.
Christopher?
Yeah, just to concur, and yeah, under the current rules, the four-square-metre rules, that are being interpreted widely across different venues, the numbers that we as a festival can get into venues depends on interpretation. So one thing that I think is really need to press forward with is a really clear, especially direction in terms of what is doable, and hence 50% of the house is a much clearer position to be in. I've got a range of venues who have interpreted the four-square-metre rules in very different ways. I've got a venue that normally holds 550 people interpreting it, so I can only have 100 people. I have another venue that holds 600 people interpreting it away, and they can hold 200 people. There's no consistency. And so a position that is consistent and consistently rolled out, I think, is really important. I think it's really important that that 50% rule is harmonised across venues in terms of the way that we implement it, i.e. the checkerboard seating that I'm sure people have been made up of, and I understand the sports stadiums will be using, i.e. every seat beside you is vacant, and the seat in front of you is vacant because there's a checkerboard in front of you. I think that people should maintain that checkerboarding regardless of whether or not they're from the same household or not, so that there is a consistency and that sort of the public can see social distancing in action and understand that the theatres have made a response to it and they can feel safe in that environment. Some theatres are going ahead and allowing partners to book together and then leave a seat between them. That's going to lead to inconsistencies, it's going to lead to people saying, why are they together, why aren't we together? But if we just implement a 50% checkerboard rule across the industry, it's a clean message to make audiences feel safe. Mr Graham brought up the idea of outdoor and the sporting stadiums having some advantages. I just put back that whilst the aerosol factor in outdoors is better, in an outdoor stadium, people are there cheering, shouting, you know, very vocal and everything else. When you're in a theatre, for the most part, you're sitting there silently, you're not, you're not, the aerosol is a lot smaller factor. And in fact, if we added mask-wearing to all of that, I think that we can address, these are the sort of issues that we're putting forward to the Ministry of Health now as we're trying to get the festival on in 2021. I also think we've got to consider the, and this is where I'm getting feedback from health as well, the big issues are about ingress and egress. And again, when we're talking theatres, we're talking about small amounts of people needing to get into the venues and out of the venues, using public transport and the other areas where there are concerns. Compared to 20,000 people going into a stadium, 500 people or 250 people going into a 500-seat venue, we're not going to have any of those problems that ingress and egress will cause those other issues.
Thanks, all of you. Ms Kate Ferman?
Thank you, Chair. Just trying to get a sense of what the engagement with government has been then around developing a COVID-19, a consistent COVID-19 safety plan for venues, possibly particularly for the smaller venues. There's been, some of your evidence suggests that it's been difficult to get consistency. Are you having consultation at the moment with Create New South Wales in relation to-
Can we just ask the-
Trevor!
Sorry, but we end up in a monologue. Can we just ask the question?
All right.
Was I just saying, are you, did you hear the first, like, two words of that?
Anyhow, sorry. Can I say, we have limited time. Points of order are best taken as points of order.
Well, I'll take it as a point of order. Ask the question rather than the speech.
All right, well, I think it was a question, and unfortunately, we're now probably all a bit confused and we may have to just start again. So, Ms Kate Ferman?
Can I, I'm going to do another monologue again then, no. So can I just get a sense of what consultation that you're having at the moment with government to develop a consistent COVID-19 safety plan for your venues in relation to size? So small to medium arts venues particularly?
We might work backwards this time, starting with you, Christopher, and then working our way back.
Although I just, yeah. I said small to medium, and then Christopher, yeah, it's all good. Go.
So we've been working quite closely with Create New South Wales, particularly in establishing an outdoor venue that we're trying to get up and get, playing to the strengths of the door in terms of being COVID-safe at the moment. And through Create New South Wales, I've been working with the Ministry of Health, going through their concerns in terms of what people would do to be able to establish it as a COVID-safe venue. We've also put it forward to Create New South Wales as a model of presentation that we may well need to sit up moving forward as we live with the virus for the next 12 to 18 months. That this could be a very good model in ways of getting large audiences, we're talking about audiences up to 1,500 people in a COVID-safe environment in front of live performance. And we're working closely, as they say, with Create in getting it underway.
Penelope?
Look, we, like the Theatre Network, we did a survey in the last two days this week in preparation for speaking here today, and we've also had the phone lines open and it's been off the hook. Lastly, the feedback is that communications are still really vague and unclear. There's, largely people have worked out across the gallery sector how to reopen. There's been an incredible amount of internal industry collegiality and sharing information and working it out together. There's very little consistent information coming from Create New South Wales.
Katrina and Nicole?
I'll go first. Yeah, so I just, like, agree with what Penelope said. We've seen a lot of our venues and a lot of our companies sharing information and guidelines amongst themselves as a way to get their doors open, and that the communication from Create New South Wales has been minimal. I can point out that Ausdance New South Wales, who represent the dance sector in New South Wales, and worked more closely with the sports department to actually get guidelines that they could give out to their members and their, about how they can open their workshops and how they can start their venues again as dancers. They really were not getting much from Create New South Wales, and they had to go to health, health and sports, which was great, but also a bit of an issue. Yeah, so that's probably really just where I'm at. I'll go hand to you.
I'll just give you a bit of a national angle, because we're a national organisation, and there will be a real need for Create New South Wales to engage with the other state funding agencies, because with a new COVID world, there won't be much international touring for a very long time. There will be an opportunity for quite a lot of national touring and exchange of work across the country, but what that's going to require, again, is consistency across state boundaries. So building a tour across, you know, several different state borders will mean that you will want to have the same COVID-safe definitions across the country. So my members are saying, you know, that's going to be needed before people feel confident enough to build a national tour.
Kerry?
Yeah, I understand that many representative associations have had decent consultation and communication, but as Nicole says, on a national level. So Live Performance Australia, PAC Australia certainly worked very hard at the beginning to put some opening guidelines together. We pulled together a working group of small theatres in Sydney in May with legal and risk support as well to create our own reopening strategies, which is how we've been able to reopen this month. But again, we need consistency, to Nicole's point earlier, the inconsistency across all business levels is the problem at the moment. I would love to see government looking at running COVID-safe operations like we do RSA or food health safety. Why are we not having it through an agency that, where you can go and get your course, do it, and it's checked off by inspectors? It should be consistent across all businesses.
Yeah, or even an online qualification that you can do and get to tick.
Because I have customers coming to our door at our theatre at the moment saying either, this is fantastic, we feel really safe, but we don't feel like that down the restaurant down the road, or you get a bit of pushback where they say, but I didn't have to do this at the pub I was just at, why do I have to do it now? And it's going to erode audience and customer confidence.
Thank you. So just to be clear on that then, because my question was around Create New South Wales, but it sounds like some of the, you have been told to go to New South Wales Health in relation to COVID-safe plans. Has there been, is there specific people within New South Wales Health who have been tasked with dealing with the arts community? Possibly?
I guess I raise that, so they weren't actually told to go to New South Wales Health. Ausdance New South Wales were seeking ways to get the information, so they were just calling everybody. They called New South Wales Health, who also suggested calling sports, and that's how they got their information. As far as I'm aware, there isn't anyone specifically in New South Wales Health looking at the arts.
How about Create New South Wales? Is there a contact point there for COVID-19? I can see you. Yep, Christopher, you're nodding, but Penelope was shaking her head, so we'll go to you, Christopher, and then to Penelope. But I could have been wrong.
Rebecca Dean, they nominated us to help, and it's been through Rebecca Dean at Create New South Wales. that we've been working with the Ministry of Health because the outdoor venue we are proposing would require exemptions under the current health guidelines. And so we are working with them to see whether or not we can get the exemptions as required to ensure the venue can proceed in January 21.
Penelope, I didn't mean to verbal you, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, it's fine. I haven't, I don't know of anybody at Create who has sufficient information to be helpful.
Yeah.
I would just say this is systemic of a larger problem in that the bulk of our sector, the small to mediums and independents, don't have access or representation.
Yeah, it seems, Christopher, so no disrespect to your position, but you're one of the larger players, you know the people inside Create New South Wales, you have avenues to get the information, but the rest of the operators don't really have a place to go and there's no front-facing element of Create New South Wales or any part of the government to find this information. Is that a fair summary?
Yes.
I think that would be correct to say, we're, you know, in terms of the industry on the large, one of a large organisation.
I'll just ask a question that, is there on either a Create New South Wales website or some other website, either a page or a button to press that says, "Go here for information regarding what you should do"? I know that might sound basic, but...
Actually, no. There are pages on the Create New South Wales website that have the words COVID-19 in them. Lastly, they're very brief and they are about the funding packages with an email address that you can go to and ask questions, but there's no clear guidelines on opening. It's just a lot of information about grants that are available in different parts of the sector.
Is there any, yeah, look, that's great about the funding, but is there any "go and speak to X" on a webpage, for instance?
Not that I know of.
Not that I'm aware of.
Can I, okay.
Yes, sure, Nicole.
Just to reiterate, it's not a simple thing for Create New South Wales actually to have all the answers right now, but what they can do is they can be in contact with the sector more and use the sector. That's why I mentioned in my opening statement, the idea of roundtables with the industry. It's really important to be in constant communication with the sector because the virus is changing and our response to it needs to change accordingly. So, what actually needs to happen rather than static information on a page is a way to have ongoing, deep and broad communication with the whole sector.
Nicole, I'm not arguing the toss on that at all, but it seems to me that one of the problems for Create New South Wales is they are not the masters of their own destiny because it's actually health that fires the bullets. But there needs to be some way for people to be escorted through the system and perhaps have representatives, I would have thought, within, whether it be Create New South Wales or the Department of Sport, who can make representations on behalf of the sector, I think.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
Yeah.
I'd jump in at that point, because I think that is a good point. In terms of dealing with guidelines and the response to the pandemic, there is a government process that a range of more concentrated industries have been able to sort of come to the table, work out a way to work. One of the biggest challenges here, as I listen to what you're saying, is this is such a decentralised industry, particularly the small to medium sector, and it clearly hasn't been. That process which is set up just isn't able to cope with the sort of engagement you're talking about. Have you got a view about how that might happen? There is a process there. How would it be possible to coordinate with the sector to make this happen?
We're going to go to you, Nicole, first because you've got the largest image on the screen, and then we're going to go to perhaps Katrina, Penelope, Christopher and Carrie.
Sorry, can you clarify the question again?
How is it, how is it best to engage? It's a quite decentralised industry, lots of small to medium players. What's the best method to have that urgent engagement?
I would say art form base is a good place to start and roundtables. And so Create New South Wales will have contact lists on different art forms and can pull together, you know, 20 people for a roundtable. And that can be online or it can be in person. You lucky people in Sydney who can do that. And they should be regulated, as I said, so that as the response needs to change, you know, you get new insights from the sector.
Katrina?
Yeah, and just to add to that, there are some really great service organisations in New South Wales who have access to members and can reach their members relatively quickly, like NAVA, TNN, Ausdance New South Wales, Music New South Wales and Regional Arts New South Wales and the museum and gallery sector. They have big memberships and they can get information out relatively quickly and also get people in to help on those kind of roundtables that Nicole is discussing. So, services can play a really big role in that.
Penelope?
I agree with Katrina. We have been doing that all year. NAVA has been hosting weekly meetings nationally and, you know, we have close contacts with a great deal of the New South Wales sector and have really been publishing information as much, as quickly as we can to help people through this very confusing time.
Christopher, then, Carrie.
I'll echo the comments of my colleagues and just to add that what is vital is actually some solutions to come out of it. There needs to be a roadmap forward and so, again, I have had information, I have attended information sessions, again, they were targeted at the larger sector of the industry, but there were very much information sessions about the status quo, what was happening and more or less a lot of what wasn't possible. But it was the nature of the event, it was what we were running in the middle of it all and that we needed that information, so that's not a criticism. But it is absolutely time now, and it's critical now, that we quickly work out the roadmap forward or we will lose a whole section of the industry. We need a roadmap and we need one quickly.
Carrie?
Yeah, I would echo Chris's urgency. I would just also like to say that this needs to be a whole of government approach, so just consultation with Create New South Wales is one thing, as long as there's representatives from other departments there and that we know there's a clear line of communication. I'd also just note that to date, and fair enough, but Create New South Wales's communications tend to be with the funded organisations that they support, and as we know, that's the very small percentage of our sector.
Natalie, you had some questions?
Thank you, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you. I had questions for the panel about, we've heard about the challenges, I understand that, I appreciate your importance and all that, thank you. I did want to do about your experience though with the existing consultation at Create New South Wales about your work and your engagement with, I think it's called Project Awake. Could you tell the committee about that, please?
Who wants to kick that off?
Right, Chris, I think you're on that.
I'd love to, Project Awake.
Project Asleep?
I've never heard of that.
We're not getting... I don't think, I don't think they're awake to awake.
They're asleep to awake.
Oh, I bet I'm not criticising anyone for not being awake to awake. No. Next one, Natalie.
Sorry, if I may speak. I understand it's something to do with the festival, I'm sorry, I'm not across the detail of it, but my understanding is there is an engagement process for the festival in 2021 trying to engage with the sector to roll that out and that is headed up by Rebecca Dean and they're facilitating engagement with health.
Yes, I agree. We're very much working with Rebecca Dean in terms of getting the, as I said, the January festival on, particularly around the new outdoor venue that we're trying to establish at Barrandal Room. If it's coming under a title, I just wasn't aware of it, but we've been working closely with Rebecca on that and it's been, it's been too late that we've been given the right context and the right advice in the Ministry of Health. They've given particularly incredible support to the proposal we're putting forward and as I understand it, it's now moved to the new picking group that the Premier established, headed up by the Treasurer, Mr Perret, Minister Ayers and Deputy Premier John Mala, who are looking at getting events.
Yes, I was going to say, I thought everyone could pronounce his name.
That's okay. Has that been, has that been extended to the Fringe Festival, that kind of cooperation and approach, Carrie?
No.
No. Sorry, Natalie.
I have contact with Project Awake from the early June, but I haven't heard anything about it since.
Okay, can I just ask, and I just wanted to say thank you, Carrie, for your input to each of the inquiries. You were especially helpful during the inquiry into the night time, city's night time economy and appreciate your persistence and patience with a number of things we're doing. Could I ask you to comment on the industry advisory group? I think you've been a part of that and anyone else who has been, and also on the reviews on the bill, on the 24-hour economy bill and your engagement with that process, with the strategy advisory group.
So, we've been really happy to be a part of the advisory group for the 24-hour plan. We have come out in strong endorsement of the plan. There are some great things in there. I, again, as per my opening comments, would urge the government to move hard and fast on that, to fund it adequately, but also to implement it. It was a plan that was drafted pre-COVID and so it is even more urgent now. I understand that the bane of government's existence is stakeholders coming to them in the middle of a crisis and saying, you know, re-requesting things we've been asking for for years. But what I would just note is that our sector's been in crisis for years. This has just propelled it further. The 24-hour economy plan really does create a nice, good pathway that deals with a lot of those major issues around regulatory red tape, archaic regulation and conditions for our sector, and also encourages investment to nurture it. So, I am a strong advocate for it. And yes, the Sydney Fringe has been, had strong engagement with Minister Ayers's office on that.
Thank you. And I just wanted to pick up on that point because I don't think, I respectfully disagree, I think it's the bane of anyone's existence to have ongoing. I think it's welcomed and it should be the case. It's not, you don't just set in stone forever and certainly it's not the case that government should be telling, deciding how these things should be done. It was part of our recommendations that we engage in an ongoing way with an industry group. So, that is, I think, the purpose of the industry group, to be an ongoing feedback mechanism, is it not?
Yes, I really just was cheekily referring to a number of comments I've received as we've been reiterating the requests that have been put to government over a number of years during this crisis time and absorbing them into our requests for a way out of the crisis. It is important that we acknowledge that this advocacy work and good engagement with government that's happened over the last few years, those items are still outstanding and are even more important now.
Just one other thing, I am informed, I think that there is a landing page on the Create website for how the sector can engage, just to be clear for the committee's benefit, that there is a landing page there and there's a link on the right under the Create website under the resources apparently. So, maybe we should all go there in the lunch break and have a look at that. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Ms Wood. I had a question to you, Katrina and Nicole, about your survey. I've got to say, I found the results quite damning of the grants process in New South Wales, that the lack of confidence amongst your membership in the transparency of the grants process. Did either of you want to speak to that a little more, in a little more detail? I mean, one of the figures was 80% of recipients had no, no belief in the transparency of the New South Wales Grants Programme. Nicole, Katrina, did you want to kick that off?
Yeah, so Theatre Network New South Wales did a survey in the lead up to a submission, which we committed with Regional Arts New South Wales, Ausdance New South Wales and Music New South Wales. And then Theatre Network Australia also did, have been doing surveys. And yes, you're right, those surveys are showing a real lack of confidence in the grants process at this stage. People are raising issues around transparency, around timelines, more often than not, the timelines for announcements are delayed and delayed and delayed, to the point of being projects started, annual programmes are started and they still don't know whether they've got funding. And in a recent round, the funding decisions were reached to the press before companies were informed about the outcome. And that caused a lot of concern within the industry. And what has happened and what is going on is it's building up a lack of distrust in the process. And I think that's a real major concern in that whole peer assessment process. People believe in the peer assessment process, but they want more transparency around it. But I would add that people are very clear in saying their engagement and discussions with Create New South Wales is improving and that the staff there are working really hard, but they feel like there's a disconnect between the ministry and the department itself.
Well, when I read the commentary, there's repeated reference to, and I'll just read one comment, "As mentioned, political interference in the assessment process, a lot of work goes into applying and assessing, to then have ministers play favourites and impose political priorities is a very, is very poor form", is one of the comments. And in terms of data...
I'm going to take the point of order. And you know I have to.
Well, my question is, my question is, given those kinds of comments and given the data that has only 4.6% of respondents saying they had trust in the grants programmes and two-thirds saying they didn't, what needs to change?
Well, I'm going to take the...
What needs to change?
I'm going to take the point of order, Chair. And I know I'm making it to the Chair, but you would expect me to take this point of order. With respect, this is an inquiry into the COVID-19 responses. The question that you're going to may well fit either within budget estimates or alternatively within the powerhouse museum and other bits and pieces, but really, I struggle to see how it's directly relevant. Many of the questions asked today have been quite on point and critical of government and that's fine by me, but there is actually a structure of doing this.
No, no, no. Well, I mean, it's in the context of, I think, the previous two rounds of witnesses both said that there needs to be an urgent opening of grants for the sector. And we can't repeat, and we can't, what needs to change if we do have an urgent opening of grants so as we re-establish trust? Because you wouldn't want to revisit what's happened in the past. I'll go to you, Katrina, then you, Carrie.
He doesn't like...
And Chair, because I have a question on that point I'd like to ask also. Thank you.
We'll just go through the panel. Katrina?
So, sorry, just to be clear, are you asking what changes we think should be put in place?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
I definitely think that guidelines should be kept and met and there needs to be greater engagement and consultation with the sector around how those processes happen. There is a misunderstanding within the sector around the fact that the minister, it is his department and he does have final say over those grants, so there needs to be a bit more clarity around that. And I think the recent COVID grant that's currently in process at the moment, there is no real transparency around why those decisions are being made, even who's getting the funding and where that funding is going. So, in terms of COVID grants, that package is still very unclear to the sector. So, transparency and communication, I think that's the key.
Carrie?
Yeah, and speed.
I think we've heard that from everybody.
Yeah. I would just say that I think that the shuffle up with the art form boards has been positive to the whole process that recently happened. In relation to COVID, the rescue and restart package, yes, it's about speed is imperative. Those organisations that weren't deemed in need of rescuing, like Fringe, are now about to be needed to be rescued if we don't get the restart money. And the indication from the department for me has been that that won't come earlier than February. And by then, it's too late. It needs to happen now and I think if you can speed it up and get it out into the sector, it will go a long way to earning the trust.
Penelope? And then I'll go to you.
Just a clarification of that money, just to Carrie, if that's okay. The money that you're saying is coming in February, how much are we talking?
So, I'm obviously not across how internal departments have divided up budgets, but the understanding the sector has is that of that $50 million pool... the understanding the sector has is that of that $50 million pool, half of it has been allocated to the rescue tranche and half of it has been allocated to the restart section. And there are a number of key organisations who were deemed safe and not needing rescuing, Sydney Fringe was one of those, because we were able to trade until February.
So at best, you're going to get the restart rather than the.
That's, and that's fine and tenable for us, but if we have to wait until February when all of our money runs out to get some restart money, then we won't be able to carry on. So the organisations that have safeguarded themselves and are going to be okay and have not asked for government funds this year and are okay, they need injection of stimulus now from that second tranche to keep going and ensure that they won't need a handout later on.
Penelope?
Yeah, look, the criteria for those, the COVID support funds have been very minimal and very unclear. A lot of people went through the process, the time-consuming process of applying, only to receive a call that they didn't demonstrate enough need. Just on the point of the other, you know, the usual grant programmes and the COVID grant programmes, they all interlink. The problem, particularly this week with the regional galleries, only 22 out of the local-run regional galleries received, 22 out of 62 local-run, local government-run galleries received the announcement this week about multi-year funding, and actually only half of those received multi-year funding. The other half received only one year of funding, even though they'd applied in a multi-year round, and that announcement has come five months after Create New South Wales said that they would be announcing, and so they already sort of missed the boat to apply for emergency funding. The mystery around decision-making is really driving everybody crazy and having a huge impact on mental health and instability, and a great number of people are looking to check it in. It's very sad.
All right, thanks. Natalie, I think you had a question.
Sorry, yeah, I just, sorry, I didn't mean to press the point, just on that funding, if I may, can I just ask Chris and Kerry and any other panel members in the short time that's flipped, just to comment the work and the makeup of the art form advisory boards, and they advise on this funding and the strategic issues facing the sector, can you comment on that, both?
And then, yeah, just to confirm, and I do sit on one of the advisory panels and have so an active member. And I think to touch on Penelope's point, she made clearly there with the recent announcement, the biggest issue moving forward is actually the level of funds to distribute or invest, I should say. In terms of reviewing applications, the level of excellence that we use that as the measure is deep and long, and the funding runs out well before you get towards the applications that are not required to be eligible for that investment. So I know you've probably heard it, you hear it in a medium band, but there is a lack of funding available to distribute it, to ensure that all that excellence is met.
And I just was interested in the boards, though, the boards, the purpose of them is to advise on this funding, isn't it, and that process?
Absolutely. So again, the board's process is to review the applications, to rank them in order of merit and excellence, and then make recommendations to the minister's office about how the funding should be allocated.
So there is a process that is clear and is engaging with the sector, not perfect for all the many of them, but Kerry, can you comment on that as well?
Yes, and like Chris, I sit on one of those art form boards as well and have done and participate actively throughout the year. There is a thorough assessment process that is undertaken by those boards, and I will just echo Chris, and our feedback that we've given to the minister's office at the end of every round that we've assessed since I've started working on those boards is that there is a lack of overall funding, we need to increase the funding pool. And as Chris said, the applications are excellent, and on many occasion, we are sitting there torn, where we can only actually fund the first couple of applications out of a round of 40 or 50 excellent projects, and that is the reality of it.
Yeah, and that also advises on strategic issues as well, not just the funding, is that right?
Yes.
Clarify that?
My understanding is the boards are not just advising on funding issues, but also on strategic issues, is that correct?
It is in the scope of the remit of the boards to be available for to give strategic advice, yes.
Just on the boards, if I might, Natalie. Christopher, did you have something to add to that?
No, no, thank you.
I'm reading from some of the comments from the, from the, from the survey, from theatres, from the theatre's submission, and a number of them make statements like this, to have every art form board have a member of the Opera House skews the outcomes towards the Sydney status quo, I don't know how to compete when I'm standing so far away from anything they measure or let alone see, or let alone can imagine, because urban environments are not my centre or apex of achievement. Do you think it's a fair criticism of the boards that they have a, that they have a preponderance of the big players in it, and therefore the small and medium, the smaller players aren't, don't feel like they're visible, don't feel like they have an input? Is that, is that an unfair criticism of the boards that you sit on? Or even if you want to.
To one that I sit on correctly, I think that would be an unfair criticism, I think it's actually well balanced, and I think it would be a fairly, all the positions are public, I think it'd be a fairly easy exercise to go through that, but the panel I sit on, I would say is a well-balanced.
I would agree with Chris's statements. I think that there's a fair distribution across the board that I sit on. I would also say to the sector who has those sorts of feelings, that the deliberations that are undertaken, in my experience, are very mindful of an even distribution of funds across the state.
Right, but it goes back to that point. Another comment is, the lack of transparency in the pot means that far too many applications have been laboured over for a pool of money that is too small. That's where I think, that's the nub of the problem, is it?
Yeah.
I think, I mean, you know, putting those comments in there isn't to say that these are all, you know, accurate statements. We wanted to show that actually there's a lot of hurt out there, and that's what is good to read into those comments, is how much the sector is hurting. And, you know, as we've discussed in this forum, communication and transparency will help that. If people understand those processes and they understand who is on those panels and they understand what deliberations are happening behind the scenes, not in detail, then that goes a long way to making them feel more confident.
We have run out of time, I'm sorry. Look, on behalf of the committee, thank you all for the work you do. Much of it, you know, out of hours, outside any sort of reasonable distribution of paid work. And Nicole, lovely to see you from Melbourne, it's a pity we couldn't have you here. But again, thank you for all the work you do, and I think the sense of urgency has been thoroughly conveyed, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.